Good afternoon. I call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners regular meeting of May the 6th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We also have with us our Clerk of the Board and our County Administrator. Good afternoon. So we're going to move forward with our first item on the agenda, which is silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. I would just ask that if you would like to include the people of India that are going through this devastating virus, so if we could have a moment of silence. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And we have a presentation proclaiming May 2021 as Building Safety Month, and I believe, James, are you going to present that?
I am here as well as the building official, Mike Stalen, and also we have Rick Faulkner, potentially our building inspector available as well.
Okay, very good. So would someone like to speak as it relates to what this month proclaims and why it's so necessary?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that, Madam President and Commissioners. May is Building Safety Month. It's very important from a perspective of making sure that all the buildings that are constructed in the county here and also in the nation, that those structures that are constructed safely. And with summer coming up, we want to make sure, as well as everybody, we want to make sure that construction on these structures is safe, and we want to recognize that this is National Building Safety Month. We have in Hamilton County over 5,000 permits. Roughly 10% of those permits are interior residential alterations or residential decks. Those are a lot of DIY projects that people take on. It's important this time of year, as people get ready to take on summer projects, that we recognize the need for building codes and the need for building safety, and our building officials are here to make sure we implement the safe codes and also make sure that we review and hopefully everybody who is building something gets their plans in for review. So we encourage folks to make sure they're submitting their plans to us so that we can review from a safety standpoint, because we want to make sure that our constituents here in Hamilton County are safe when they're constructing decks and all the other things that are going on here. So we want to recognize that. Mike, do you have anything to add from there?
Commissioners, I'm the chief building official as of last month, and the whole point of our department is to make sure you don't hear about things that go wrong with buildings. You don't hear about a deck collapsing, you don't hear about exits being blocked and people not being wheeled out. We make sure that the buildings are safe, and we try to help citizens make them safe. We work with all the citizens that come in here and help them meet the building codes without making too many hurdles for them to jump over. So I just want to thank you for entrusting us with that responsibility and for following through this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike, and congratulations to you. And fortunately, this year, we'll be able to do some renovations on the infrastructure that would be very helpful as we have monies coming in for that purpose. I'd like to open it up for my fellow commissioners, my Madam Commissioners, Vice President Alicia Reese, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you, Madam President. I just join with you and also happy to support this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Ditto. Congratulations to you and your team. This is one of those functions of the county that kind of flies under the radar a bit, but as you pointed out, it's critically important to the community. So delighted to join the chorus recognizing the special recognition.
Thank you. Jeff, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, go on.
Thank you, Madam President. Just very briefly, and I believe it was Mike that hit on these two incidents, but while Commissioner Drehouse is absolutely correct, this is a function that kind of flies underneath the radar. It is something that, you know, you just watch the news, and every so often it pops up where you'll see, and thankfully, and knock on wood, hasn't been in Hamilton County, but in other communities across the country where you will hear about a deck collapsing at a restaurant, or a deck, a private residential deck collapsing, or a stairwell, or about a door that was blocked during a fire evacuation that caused injury or death. And those are things that we rely upon, James and Mike and their team, to help us with, to make sure that the buildings in Hamilton County remain safe. And so I want to thank James and his team from that perspective, and also the other side, as Mike said, balancing that with the need to get development done and to have a process that developers and those that are in the do-it-yourself community find easy and conducive to development as well. And I think our team has come a long way as it relates to that as well, so that we not only have a safe process in Hamilton County, but a process that is conducive to making sure that we can get development done and that the county remains open for business. So I want to thank our department for that, and thank you, Madam President, for the time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you both. We'll move forward. And Bridgette, are there any public comments that you can see in queue?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. All righty, we have comments and motions from our Commissioners, Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to also state that we're stepping up our mobile efforts for the vaccine, and the governor has, through the Ohio Department of Health, has given us some additional vans, as well as our bus will be ready to go, but we are mobile in multiple locations and being very aggressive in getting the mobile part of the plan, trying to get to people who, you know, haven't gotten that shot yet, who need it, and going to some places, creative places. I know we were at the movie theater in Kenwood, and we're going to be going to some places throughout the county and its partnership with the City of Cincinnati, as well as our Director Moore, as well as our County Health Commissioner Kesterman. So excited about that. It'll be kicking off tomorrow, but Monday will be kind of full-blown, and we'll be having some more announcements of places where people will be able to just pull up and you'll be able to get your shot. So excited about that. Also wanted to, as we all acknowledge, Teacher Appreciation Week. I know all of us have had some great teachers in our lives, and certainly some great teachers that are still working every day. So wanted to acknowledge our teachers during this Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm sure later we'll have something on Mental Health Month as we enter that month. And I was happy to join both of you with our Coroner for the opening of our Crime Lab and the Coroner Building out in Blue Ash, and certainly a great accomplishment. So I was happy to join both you, President Dumas and Commissioner Drehouse, as well as Jeff from our administration, and so many others. It was a major accomplishment. Also was happy to join both of you in welcoming the Vice President to Hamilton County, Vice President Kamala Harris, who came and visited. So I was happy to be a part of that and look forward to the focus on infrastructure and certainly bringing infrastructure dollars back here to help us with the bridges that we have. We have plenty of them, certainly the Brent Spence, but also the Western Hills Viaduct. So was excited to welcome her. And also want to acknowledge Regina Williams. They'll be honoring her tomorrow at Withrow High School. Regina Williams is a basketball All-American and just got appointed the first African-American female athletic director in Cincinnati Public Schools. So she gets to do it at her alma mater and my alma mater. So looking forward tomorrow to honoring her for that accomplishment. And then last but not least, if I got my dates right, Madam President, I think you have a birthday today. So I want to just say happy birthday to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Commissioner Drehouse?
That's also on my list. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, you know, it's fun to celebrate birthdays, and so I'm not going to ask you how old you are, but congratulations on another year and happy birthday. Also, I want to piggyback on the vaccine efforts. You know, we at the briefing yesterday talked a lot about the city's locations, the county's locations. It has never been easier to get a vaccine in Hamilton County. And so for those that have waited because they wanted to make sure the more vulnerable among us got vaccinated first, they've been vaccinated at a very high rate, and so the time is now to go get your shot. You don't have to make an appointment. You just walk up, and there are locations all over the county, convenient to everyone, and they're listed on the Test and Protect Cincy website. So please go there, look for pharmacies. You know, the hospitals are doing it, the county, the city, we're just all over the place administering vaccines. So I just want to encourage everybody to go now and try to keep yourself safe and keep the rest of the community safe. So two other things. I too wanted to mention the Crime Lab. It was a great celebration at the Crime Lab. It's a huge investment by the county when it comes to the safety of the county, both through the work they do in partnership with Hamilton County Sheriff and her deputies and, you know, all the other law enforcement agencies that use that facility for the work they do. And also, when we try to understand what is happening to people, especially related to overdoses, from my perspective, is the Chair of the Addiction Response Coalition, we rely heavily on the Coroner's data to understand what the trends are and where we need to be to keep people alive in this community and get them into long-term recovery. And so we work in partnership with the Coroner. And so I've been to the old lab, and it was very outdated, and I think she made an extra special point of that at the opening, but it is true that we have definitely upgraded in that building. And so she will now be able to do work regionally and make money for the county through that regional effort. So it was exciting to be there with both of you and others to celebrate that. And lastly, I just got back from a tour of the 911 operation. Andy Knapp, the Director of Communications, I reached out after he was on one of our meetings and said, hey, you know, I'd love to take a tour and meet some of the team. And so I went over, and, you know, we are always recruiting for 911. We're always looking for people to do what is a very difficult job, but it's such an important job. I really think it's a bit of a calling when you meet these folks and literally see the work that they're doing and some of the stressors that they have to deal with when people are calling in emergency situations. And so our call response time is above state standards, and it has been and it still is above state standards, and I think that speaks to the dedication of that team. At the same time, we are recruiting and bringing in new training classes. And so I just want to put the call out to the community that, you know, there's anyone that is interested in doing that work. It is so important to the county, so important to the safety of the residents. They should look to apply for that because we're looking for some good people to join the ranks. So thank you. Thank you for that, and that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a couple things. I won't rehash what was said as far as where we've gone this week and last week, but as it relates, it was just really exciting as everyone was saying with the ribbon cutting for the Coroner's Building. And I will have to mention, though, Kamala Harris, when she was here, just a short story, we all were able to have a brief photo with her, and when I went in, I just said a couple words about the historical perspective as it relates to being the first African-American in the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. And then she left her six-foot mark and came over and gave me an elbow bump. So the security was like, no, don't move. So she couldn't resist it. So I haven't washed my elbow since then, but I thought that was exciting. So when they took a picture of us, I'm hoping they got the elbow bump instead of the other bump. So I was going to bring up about the American Rescue Plan, and I know Jeff is going to talk, say a little bit more about it, but just let the residents know that we're continuing to work on that strategically, and they will be involved in that process. And lastly, I thank all of you for your well wishes as it relates to my birthday. I somewhat put it in perspective because there are millions of people who have this day as their special day, even my great nephew, his day is today. But I think about millions didn't make it with this pandemic and other things, and I'm one of the ones who did. So it really has special significance to me this year as we go through this pandemic and go out of this pandemic. So certainly we'll have a great day today. Thank you all for your wishes. So I'll move forward. Jeff Aludo?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one quick by-leave comment, no actual by-leaves on the agenda, but just a comment into your point about the American Rescue Plan. We did today have our second external stakeholder meeting. We had the first one earlier this week, and both of them went extremely well, received a lot of great feedback from a lot of our partners in the community, in particular today, and this is not an all-inclusive list, but we heard from the Human Services Chamber, from LISC, from the Greater Cincinnati Hotel Association, the Council on Aging, the Municipal League, some of our, many of our health partners, Closing the Health Gap, et cetera. So a lot of great community partners, and there were more. But heard some of the same things that we've heard in the past as well from some of our other meetings. We heard a lot about affordable housing, we heard about mental health, we heard about workforce development, and more and more, we continue to hear about workforce shortages and organizations that just can't get the workforce they need, whether it's in the home health sector, or in restaurants, or in the hospitality industry, but more and more areas that are looking for workforce that can't find it. So looking at avenues for training and retooling from that perspective. Childcare continues to come up as an increasing burden on families looking to reengage and re-enter the workforce. So a lot of great information as the administration begins to take this information to pull together what I would consider to be a high-level concept plan for the Board's consideration in the coming weeks as we look to then move into public hearings, and finally, the Board's approval of a plan that it can ask the administration to advance on its behalf. So happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to provide that update on the process. And I believe on Tuesday, we will continue with what has been our trend of having on-staff meeting agenda, an opportunity for additional engagement dialogue with the Board on the American Rescue Plan. And I'm hopeful that by that point, we actually have received some Treasury, perhaps the funding, but also the Treasury guidance, which we continue to hear may be out on May the 10th. So thank you, Madam President. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions as it relates to Jeff's report? Vice President Reese?
No questions. I just wanted to, if you could maybe highlight Jeff, that the rental assistance money, that is an addition to the 150, I don't know, 157 million? We will get additional?
Yeah.
Is that separate or included, I guess?
Great point, because, and I think the Board had said something about this, whether it was Tuesday or last Thursday, was as we look to put together a plan on this, we want to be inclusive of all the different funding streams that we've received and make the best use of those funding streams. So to your point, Commissioner, yeah, we have, I believe, close to 27 million additional dollars coming through various forms of emergency rental assistance, which is on top of money that we put towards rental assistance through the CARES Act, and on top of dollars that the City of Cincinnati is receiving for rental assistance as well. So there is a lot of resources out there for rental assistance, and in particular resources that won't have to compete with our other programming priorities of the Board through the American Rescue Plan. So, but we'll want to consider all of that as we put together a broad-based plan.
Thank you. The reason I had asked that, Madam President, Commissioner Drehouse, is as we're putting our plan, maybe Jeff, because we may not put, out of that 150 million-plus dollars, we may not put rental assistance in that plan because we already are going to, we already have a separate line item. So I don't know when the plan comes back, if that could be maybe, Jeff, included, maybe with asterisks, so that people don't think we left out rental assistance, you know, when we deal with the other dollars. I just want to make sure they know that we are covered with the rental assistance, and I think all three of us have said that is a top priority. So I don't know how it could be included in the final report, but maybe it should be acknowledged in it, even though it's not taken away from the 150 million dollars.
Yeah, it will, it's a great, it's a great point, Commissioner. We will absolutely ensure that it is visibly evident in the plan that we bring forward to the Board, so that the Board, as well as the public, can see the, all of the resources in their totality and where they're going. We want to make sure that we're not just showing one piece of it with other programming going off in another corner. It's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, I was just going to ask two things. One is, similarly, I think it might be helpful to kind of line up some of where the CARES Act dollars went, so that we can have kind of that refresher as we look at a new funding round, and make sure that we've kind of addressed some of those needs that we knew were important in the last round, and to Commissioner Reese's points, how those things are continuing to be addressed, whether it's our dollars or direct allocation from the feds. I think that would be helpful to kind of level set. Secondly, I don't know if I missed this, Jeff. Did you talk about timing for the administration to get back to us with the recommendations?
I don't think I did, but we've been having conversations about that internally. So we want to have, we're shooting for public hearings by the end of the month, right? So with, assuming we get the guidance on the 10th, the administration is beginning work, now that we're concluding the stakeholder sessions, on putting together that plan. So the idea would be probably within a week and a half from when we get Treasury guidance is when we would deliver a concept plan to the Board, which would then give you another week and a half or so until that first public hearing to digest and begin to put your own particular spin and thoughts together on it. I suspect what the Board will get, not to get too into some of the finer details of it, but you'll get a, but this gets to your, and Commissioner Reese's earlier point, you'll get a spreadsheet that will include what we've spent through CARES Act, Rescue Plan recommendations, as well as other sources of funding like Home Dollars or some of these other emergency rental assistance funds. And then that will be combined with a narrative summary as well that would talk a little bit about the concept behind each of these. I want to leave certainly room for the Board's policy recommendations as to how we go about executing on some of these, because the concept plan we bring back to the Board, while it might talk about an allocation for affordable housing, as the Board knows, there's multiple ways we can go about implementing affordable housing program. Is it for production? Is it for maintenance? Is it for property maintenance, all those different things, or childcare? It could be multiple different ways we implement programs there, but what we'll be coming back to you with is kind of a high-level concept plan that then we will work together with the Board and with the public on refining.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse. That was a great point, because I know Jeff has always given us timelines, so we'll make sure we get that in, you know, quick enough for us to react to it. So thank you. Well, we'll move forward on our regular agenda items. Item number one, Jeff, were you going to lead the discussion on that?
Sorry, Commissioner, I muted myself. This is a resolution granting the petition for annexation of 1.6 acres from Columbia Township to the City of Madeira. Before, this is one that the Board has discussed prior. I've spoken with the administrator from Columbia Township. There's no controversy or conflict in this particular request. I would ask if Eric Beck, engineer Eric Beck, is on the line. This corresponds with a report back from the county engineer specifically as it relates to the acceptance of the legal description on this particular annexation. So I don't know whether it would be appropriate to take one item up before the other, but Erica, anything you wanted to say about the legal description and the report of the engineer on this before the Board acts?
Sure, Jeff. We have reviewed that. It was submitted back in April. Our offices reviewed that. The legal description is found to be accurate. There were some errors on their original plat. Those have been corrected, and everything is now current and accurate, and 100% of the property owners have signed. So we have no issues.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments by Vice President Reese?
No comments.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds good to me, too. I'll make a motion to adopt item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move forward with the Engineers' Office, item number two. Hi, Eric.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It was good to see you all in person this week. It's been over a year, and it was nice to be in person. Item two is the report we previously just discussed was for the annexation. I don't know that there's a need for a vote on that, Jackie, or is there?
It's just to be received for the record.
Okay, so that's submitted for the record. We'll move on to item three.
Well, why don't we just do that now, Eric?
Okay, sure.
Yeah, item number two I'd like to receive for the record.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number three.
Item number three is a resolution awarding a contract to the lowest and best bidder, John R. Jurgensen Company, for the Hubble Road improvements located in Colrain and Green Townships. It's project number 502017. Their low bid was $882,136.15. It should be noted that that bid is about a little over $200,000 less than our engineer's estimate. We always like when they come in low. It allows us to take that money and put it on other projects.
That is excellent. I like hearing that also. I know we all do. So any questions or comments as it relates to item number three?
Yes, Madam President, and I totally agree. We love coming in under. I just want to ask our engineer, Mr. Beck, do we ever have, when we have these, is there room in there for change orders? I know we had another project, not under your, not under your leadership, but we had another project, I think it was a sewer project came in, and they said once they got into it, there were, you know, more change orders than normal, but most projects have some change orders. So is there wiggle room in that, or how does that?
We, that's a very good question. We typically have an item in our contracts is a contingency item, which is between 8% and 10% of the contract amount that is set aside in the contract as needed. So we typically do not go over the bid amount.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt item number three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four.
Item number four is a resolution determining the necessity for concluding that no land or property will be damaged, determining the public convenience and welfare required that the 2021 resurfacing program located in Anderson, Colrain... that the 2021 resurfacing program located in Anderson, Colrain, Harrison, Miami, Springfield, Sickhorn, Whitewater Townships, Hamilton County, project number 502107. This is for our 2021 resurfacing program. A list of roads was provided. It's just over 10 miles and our engineer's estimate is $4 million.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments, Vice President Reese?
No questions.
Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
Erica, I have a question. It's probably very simple just for me to know, because I love learning new things. It said determining that the public convenience and welfare require that, convenience, conveyance, the difference. So convenience is just that it makes it more, oh, I'm giving you the answer, but.
Yes, you are. And that's good. I like that. Yeah, I, I like, I like that you're giving the answer. Convenience is it's, it's to benefit the public. Conveyance would be if we were transferring something. Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you so much, Mr. Beck.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Glad to be seeing you in person again soon, okay?
I hope so.
Okay. So we will move forward. We have a couple consent agenda items. And I'll just, item number five is a budget adjustment of 4.3 million for engineer resurfacing and guard rail projects and environmental services building improvements. Item number six is a resolution, number P05821, authorizing an exemption to competitive bidding for the purpose of an emergency for public storm sewer pipe repair, which is 100,000. The first one, item number five, was a little over 4 million. And then item number seven is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a property insurance program for Hamilton County properties, a little bit over $1 million. I'll open it up. Vice President Reese, if you have any questions or comments.
Madam President, I don't have any questions. Just wanted to highlight on the insurance, the property insurance, liability insurance. One of the things I had asked Jeff and the administration in the future to maybe look into if that is an area that can have some inclusion possibly, and maybe they already have. I know some of the things you had mentioned before, maybe these larger contracts and making them, you know, a little bit smaller where more people can participate. And so I don't know if Jeff wants to say anything to that, but I know we, he had indicated something that they would look into for the future. So I just wanted to, to highlight that as one potential area.
Madam President, happy to speak to it very, very quickly here. And Rodney Laughland, our risk manager, is also on. Yeah, this is something that we typically work through a broker on. And I've talked with Rodney about it. I think we're happy to take a look at the, the marketplace to see if we did break it up, whether we would be sacrificing anything from the price side. At the same time, whether we'd be hitting a new market that might be able to help with some of the competitive environment as, as well. Rodney, anything, I think our broker was certainly amenable to doing that over this next policy term?
Yes, yes, they were. And so we're looking to do a little bit of research of the market to see who's out there and identify some minority underwriters and carriers that we can invite to the table. And I think if we part out our portfolio, I think that would be an opportunity for, for, for others to, to come to the table. So definitely, I plan on coming back in the near future with, with some findings.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, thank you. So Rodney, I guess the question I'm asking is that we want to go in and adopt item number seven and then look through futuristically down the road, not very far down the road, of how to be more inclusive, correct?
That's correct. Right. This is, this is a one-year policy. So it'll be here for renewal before we know it. So in the meantime, we're going to go ahead and start doing our research and trying to identify some, some other carriers.
Right. That's great.
I, I support adopting it. I just wanted to put that point out. I thought that was great to look into something possibly for the future. I'd support this today.
Yeah, it's absolutely awesome to, to look forward toward that. So Commissioner Drehouse?
No, it just occurs to me that Robert Bell should be looped in here, if he hasn't been already.
Yes, I will, I will do that.
Okay. Very good. So with all those comments, I'd like to make a motion to adopt items five, six, and seven.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any final comments?
Commissioner, I think we have, well, there, there is, you said five, six, and seven. We have eight on there, which is another insurance item. And then I think there's also some items to receive for the record and forward related to the sheriff's item as well.
And I just printed this off like an hour ago and it wasn't on there. So I'm going to ask Vice President Reese to lead on item eight then, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Item eight is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a law enforcement liability insurance program for Hamilton County Sheriff in the amount of $118,094. And then item number nine, for to receive for the records, or two liquor licenses that have been approved by the sheriff's office for us to receive. Item number 10 is a monthly treasure report for us to receive. And item number 11 is a travel request from the coroner for two employees for a conference.
Okay. Well, thank you for all of that, because it's interesting. I don't know with the website being revised or whatever, because I actually remembered a liquor license when I looked at it. So we'll deal with that later. But I'm gonna, Vice President Reese, I'm gonna allow you just to lead that whole process from, if you don't mind, from item, to go on to item eight and just lead that.
Vice President Reese, may real quick?
Yes.
You'll be adopting resolution number eight, receiving for the record numbers nine and 10, and then approving the travel item number 11.
Okay. So I make a motion to adopt item number eight, to receive for the record item number nine and 10, and to approve item number 11.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else to come before the commission?
No, no further.
No, well, I'm going to get my party on from the basement up to the kitchen. So thank you all so much. And I thank you, Vice President Reese, for, for filling in. I'm going to figure out how I didn't have the, the rest of this. Okay. But anyway, have a great, fantastic day, because I.
Happy birthday. Do we have to have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do. And we're gonna do that. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much.